I will now call the February 6, 2017, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7. Tonight's City Council Meeting. Next we have the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? Otherwise, accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
There are seconds.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levce.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carries unanimously.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 4 has been pulled, counseled by the request of the developer. The next two items, Items 5 and 6, the public hearing, we need a motion to continue that to the February 21st Council Meeting.
So moved.
There are seconds.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a presentation by the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce, called Buy Blue Springs and Discover Blue Springs, the President, Art Vamilla.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, City Staff. Tonight, we're here to talk about the Buy Blue Springs and the Discover Blue Springs Program. The City Council Members and Mayor, you should have found a little bag at your seat there inside. Hopefully, you'll enjoy the keychain that we put in with a very small map of Blue Springs. On the reverse of the keychain are the latitude and longitude of City Hall. So if somebody asks you where you got this fine piece of keychain, it's at Genevieve's in downtown Blue Springs. So I hope you enjoy that. I do have a good number of my committee members here today. They're mostly sitting in the second row. If you guys would stand up so that they know who's here that is on the Buy Blue Springs Committee. And then the good news is, rather than listening to me present tonight, I'm going to introduce Michael Zerillo. She and her husband Joey are the co-chairs this year for the Buy Blue Springs Committee. So take it away, Michael.
All right, welcome.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for having me and letting me present tonight. So the two programs, and I'll be providing updates for you tonight, are the Discover Blue Springs Program and the Buy Blue Springs Program. You're probably familiar with these programs, and you know that they are a little bit different in that the Buy Blue Springs Program is more focused on residents, and the Discover Blue Springs Program is more focused on visitors. And although they're different, they are the same, that they both generate revenue for our community. So the first slide that we have here tonight just talks about how important it is to shop local. If every family in the United States spent an extra $10 a month at a locally-owned independent business instead of a national chain, over $9.3 billion would be directly returned to our community. So what this slide shows is that it doesn't have to be a large purchase, any kind of a big investment, just $10 a month extra would make a major impact to our economy. And like the slide shows, although this is at a national level, for a more personal way to understand is, my husband and I do own a business here in Blue Springs. We have lived here for 18 years. We moved here after serving in the Navy. Our daughters go to Blue Springs Schools. They've lived in Blue Springs all their lives. We give back to the community. We're parts of the -- members of the chamber. We are on committees. I was a Girl Scout leader. We just judged at a forensic tournament in Brittany Hill. So we give back to the community. And when you shop local, when you buy from local businesses, you're not just giving extra money to a CEO to fly his private jet to his second house in France. You are literally putting food on our table and buying Christmas presents for our kids. So it's a much more personal touch to the purchases that you make when you buy local. This next slide just gives you a little bit of an overview of the cycle of purchasing when you are a visitor to an area. The Discover Blue Springs website helps to add value to visitors when they're busy in our area. They spend money on our community, which then in turn helps to benefit the residents of this community. So we'll start with talking about the Discover Blue Springs Programs. This slide shows the Discover Blue Springs homepage. A redesign of this website was started last year, and it went live last month. Just to give you a little feel-good story about how this website has benefited Blue Springs and another family that I'll talk about. Back in November, the chamber got word of a story about a family that lives in China. They've lived in China for four years. They were moving back to the States. He started researching, looking for good cities to live in, good schools. He found our website. He then went to the city's website, the school districts, learned about what a great city it is, what great schools we have, decided to move to Blue Springs. He rented a house here. He looked at our schools. They then have talked to Grandma and Grandpa, who live in California, and they are also going to move to Blue Springs to be close to their families. So with the partnership with the city's website, the chamber's website, the school district's website, it's a link all together to help it, to make it more easy and appealing for people to do business in Blue Springs, to learn about Blue Springs, to find food, entertainment, housing, savings, when we all work together. As part of our effort with Discover Blue Springs this year, we helped promote visitor spending through various conferences and events, like the Boy Scouts of America Conference, the Kansas City Metro Softball Tournament, and even the Mary's Church, Blue Ridge Church of Christ. We handed out goodie bags that contained maps, pens, and hot deals coupons. Through the goodie bags and our sponsorships, we were able to reach about 7,000 people in a number of states with different tournaments, including Nebraska, Kansas, Illinois, and Oklahoma. So it's far-reaching. We also are participating in geocaching. For those of you who don't know what geocaching is, the definition is within this slide, but you take a handheld device, you plug in coordinates, and it's basically a treasure hunt. So we decided that we would go ahead and kind of hop on this trend that's already out there. They've already got caches in Blue Springs and all across Missouri. So we're just kind of hopping on this bandwagon. We placed a cache at Genevieve's store and just kind of waited to see what would happen. And we've had quite a few people take advantage of it, and we've got some comments, like, "We were thrilled when we finally located it. We'll be back to browse the store during normal business hours." Someone from Brownsburg, Indiana, said they were traveling with their youngest kids to find Missouri's oldest cache. I don't know what that is, but I think that sounds kind of interesting to maybe see if we can figure that out ourselves. But they decided to do this cache along the way, and they were glad that we had placed it there. So by doing this, by participating in something that's already out there, we're able to bring people to our city. Maybe they'll stop for lunch, they'll shop at a store like Genevieve's, and we're bringing them here to Buy Blue Springs. That leads us to the next program that we're going to talk about, which is the Buy Blue Springs Program. So this summer, Little Blue took part in community tours that were hosted by Blue Springs Primetime. Every Thursday in July, Primetime Kids took a tour. They got to do such activities as a mock ribbon cutting, they got to meet with Little Blue, and the idea was just to tell younger kids how important it is to shop local and support your community. And thanks to Kim for all of her work on this program and for including the chamber in this activity. If none of you, if you're not familiar with our Meet Me for Lunches, we host these once a month, different locations, different days of the month, at various chamber members' restaurants. On average, we have about 15 people. 15 different chamber members attend. We've done 11 different restaurants and one ice cream shop this year. The businesses love it because they're not able to leave their business, leave their restaurant, and participate in a lot of chamber activities. So we're kind of bringing the chamber to them. The chamber members also love it because it gives you an opportunity to try a restaurant that maybe you wouldn't ordinarily have tried. Maybe you're, you know, you're used to going to your special favorite place, so you'll go to these restaurants. For example, we've gone to Tony's, Custer's Brewers, Indian Mixed Grill, which gave people the opportunity to try something that maybe they were a little, you know, a little scared to try the Indian food, but this gave them a reason to go in and try it and support one of our chamber members. The next slide we will talk about is the Buy Local, I'm sorry, the Hot Deals ad that the chamber did to promote their Hot Deals page on the website. They worked with my husband and I's company, Money Mailer. We did an ad for the chamber, which is what you're seeing. We put offers out there. Chamber members were able to put offers of their businesses out on the website, and then we sent the ad to residents so that they would know, "Hey, go look at the chamber's website, find the hot deals, and save some money." So it's a win-win. The customers find savings, and the businesses were able to promote their business through the chamber at no cost to them. Once the mailing actually went out, it tripled the amount of hits to the chamber's website, to 12,142. Blue Springs also participated in the Global Entrepreneur Week in November. It's an effort to celebrate and connect local entrepreneurs. The metro-wide Global Entrepreneur Week events touch about 15,000 people in the Kansas City area. Our events included a coffee kickoff that received media coverage from the Examiner, a Power Hour that got local news coverage by Channel 9, and we supported the downtown open house by giving entrepreneurs that don't have a storefront the ability to promote their business within a storefront of someone else. It was a partnership with the chamber, the city, the Mid-Kona Public Library, and Downtown Alive. If we had tried to do all of these events on our own, we may not have received the kind of media coverage that we did, but because we all worked together, it was a pretty successful event. We also participated in the Shop Small Saturday campaign. Now, this campaign is promoted by American Express. They will give promotional items such as doormats, pens, shopping bags, balloons, to local businesses and to chambers to help promote small businesses. The Shop Small Saturday, or the Small Business Saturday, is the day after Black Friday, a day that local businesses really need an extra push because people are out there shopping, and they really need to be told, "Don't forget about the small local businesses. Shop Small Saturday." To keep in with the Shop Small theme, we ran a Receipt Rewards Contest, and this year we ran it from November 1st through December 12th. So we added 15 days this year versus how many we ran last year. We also included a fillable PDF on the chamber's website, which made it easier for people to participate. And we ran an ad with Money Mailer again, and we also did an insert in the city waterville. You can see the stats on the slide, but it was a significant increase when we advertised it and we added days to this program. Significant, significant increase in businesses represented and money spent locally. Our contest winner won $500, and the mayor gave her a phone call to let her know that she was the winner. It was, it was a really funny phone call. We were able to hear her on the other side be so very excited and surprised that she was talking to the mayor. He made us all laugh, he made her laugh, too. But she works in Lee Summit, and she said that usually she shops on her lunch break in Lee Summit, but because of this contest, she made a point to do her shopping in Blue Springs. She also was one of the last entrances, or entries, I'm sorry. She came to the chamber right before they closed and was really hoping that they would get their receipts, get her receipts counted. She was afraid that because she was so late, they'd probably just throw in the trash and it wouldn't even be counted. But they counted it. She won. She got to talk to the mayor. It was a good experience overall. And what we're hoping with this program is that it will change behavior like this lady's. It will make people think about buying local. It will make them think about the purchasing power and the impact that they have on their community, and just make it a good experience for everyone overall.
So as you can see, we have a great group of volunteers. I'm extremely proud of them and the things they accomplish together, their creative spirit. I'd also like to take this opportunity to just thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, and City Staff, for the support you have provided this program over the last several years. And then we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I would just like to make a comment. The Buy Blue Springs, I think, is a wonderful, wonderful program, and I was very excited to see the increase in the numbers of the shops that were visited due to the receipt program. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much for that presentation, and we'll continue and encourage people to buy Blue Springs and be involved. This bag also has some chapstick in it, too, so.
That's right.
Which I go through a lot of. Okay, next, we have a presentation from the Human Relations Commission. We have the Vice Chairman, Gino Duano, and we'll have Gino when he comes up introduce other commission members that are in the audience. Welcome, Gino.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. I'm typically not at a loss for words, but I will tell you that I received a call a couple hours ago that Kynett, the Chairman of the Committee, was unable to come and make this presentation. So I usually feel better when I'm prepared to do this, but we're going to go through it anyway. I think we'll do just fine, and I hope Kynett gets to feeling better out there. Thank you. I think a lot of you know that I'm not usually short for words, but if I am today, we'll just get through this.
Do you want to sing it?
No, we can sing it. Now, exactly, what do I push to make this go? Just the, okay.
Okay, now, Gino, can you put that mic down a little bit closer towards your mouth there, too? There we go.
Okay. Yeah, let's see. Already, these slides are out of order from where I was coming from or thinking what I was going to do. Oh, Lord. Did I go the wrong way? No, only one way to go, huh? If you all feel like you want to help, a couple of committee members back there. Well, the overview, the city of Blue Springs is a community that prides itself on its diversity and its responsiveness to all citizens. And when I first moved to this community over 20 years ago, actually, I moved from the inner city of Kansas City here because I wanted to give my children an opportunity to thrive in an atmosphere that was conducive to learning and just being the best they could be. And when we surveyed the area, Blue Springs was the community that we thought we would do the best in. Many people in my community send their kids to parochial schools, and I told my wife, I says, "We're not going to do that. We're going to spend money on making a house payment, and we're going to go to one of the best school districts here in the Kansas City area." So that's when we moved here to Blue Springs. Well, over the years, as many of you have known, because as many of you have been here, I would say the population of Blue Springs has grown, and it has changed immensely. We've got many more people moving in from the inner cities and other people coming from other communities because they know we have such a great community. As the former committee just talked about, they have a family moving here with, the grandparents are coming, and everybody's moving to the Blue Springs area. Well, what happened is they found out that for many years, Blue Springs was one of the only communities that didn't have an HRC. And I think as the mayor got out visiting with other folks, this was brought to his attention, and being a city that's progressive, we didn't want to wait. We wanted to make sure we got something together. So the mayor, together with, let me go to the next one here. The mayor, together with Chief, and I should say, Mayor Carson Ross, and Chief of Police Wayne McCoy, and Lee Summit's former HRC Chairman, Dr. Emmanuel Nagumsky, and the Blue City Council drafted a charter for the HRC to come together. It was during that time that, in the spring of 2014, let's see if I can get there, a community survey was conducted via focus groups to identify strengths within the Blue Spring community and opportunities identified by the Blue Springs citizens in which growth could be achieved, and education was then provided for the members that were chosen at that time. All the members are appointed by the mayor. Many, many come in as recommendations from community leaders and from other people in the community that thought that this would be a very diverse group to help us out as we got started. The mission of the Blue Springs HRC, let me get my stuff together here. The mission of the Blue Springs Human Relations Commission is to foster the improvement of human relations among and between citizens of all cultures, backgrounds, so as to provide all individuals with an equitable opportunity to grow and participate in the best, to the best of their ability in our community educational, political, and social systems. Now, the HRC vision, this is incorrect. This started out as the vision, and over time, we just thought it was a bit wordy, and we rewrote it and voted on it. And the new HRC vision is, Blue Springs is an inclusive community where all persons are accepted and valued. That's the new one. Now, meetings of the Human Relations Commission are held on the third Tuesday of each month in this building at 6:30, at the room at the other end of the hall here. And agendas are posted on the city of Blue Springs website prior to each meeting, and they are open to residents and neighbors and the general public. The activities of the HRC is to seek diversity, or seek and to help solve diversity disputes involving the Blue Springs citizens if necessary. HRC does offer some mediation. In the first group, the HRC was involved in a case, a local case here, that never did get resolved. However, we were involved in that and trying to give them some ideas. What we have found since the commission has come together, that since we've got a revolving door of people coming in and going out, that perhaps maybe we can do some mediation training, but our focus should be more on providing people with other services or people out there that specialize in that. In other words, being a referral agency instead of trying to solve all those problems ourself, especially since we meet only once a month, and it's hard to get a lot of things done when you meet only once a month. Referrals can be made to us via the HRCbluespringsgovernment.com website, and people can, if they have any concerns or issues in the community, whether it has to deal with their race, their religious beliefs, their personal beliefs, they can bring those to us. And what we would, what we like to do as an agency is to provide them with perhaps information, become more of an educational tool, and not try to solve the problems, but give them the tools so they can solve the problems themselves. There's what we're trying. Some of the things that the HRC has been involved in, this, some of the meetings and things they've been involved in this past year were some of the ones that are listed up there, the MLK Celebration, you know, the State of the City Address, Rotary Club Meetings, Human Rights Conference, and we still plan on participating in a lot of those things that's coming here as well. Our accomplishments for 2016, we put us on our goals to meet with other agencies in the area, because most of the agencies in the area, a lot of the HRC agencies have been together for many, many years. I think, if I remember correctly, Independence, HRC has been together like 30 or 40 years. I think Lee Summit, if I'm correct, what, they've been together about 20 years or so?
Longest is Olathe.
The longest is Olathe. Okay. So what we did is got together with all these groups, and the purpose of that was to just, as a new HRC committee, we wanted to find out what other committees were doing in the Kansas City area. And what we found is that most of those groups focused on one, one kind of, I would say, event for the year that they would either sponsor or hold. And we found that just doing one event a year wasn't enough to get out there so people would know us. So we started doing some, some of the things we did, we met with, like I said, the local HRCs to exchange ideas and discuss challenges they might face and some things we could do. During those meetings, they also walked away with ideas from us. I guess Independence had only been meeting quarterly, so four times a year is all they're meeting. Now they're at least meeting once a month. They didn't have any IDs or, or would I say, cards when they went out into the community and visited with people and talked to people. You know, if you have a card that says you're the HRC and it's got the city emblem on it, it gets you a little more credibility when you get out there. They're now using those with photo IDs. So they've got some good ideas from them. We've gotten some ideas from them as well. In 2016, we held two block parties in conjunction with the Police Department and also the Autumn Bend Apartments and Sunnyside Gardens Apartments, that both provided us their, I guess you could say, their community room or whatever they had, so that we could put on a block party to invite people to come out. The purpose of the block party is to put people, get people together so they could visit and hopefully help break down some of these barriers they have between each other. Because what we find, living in Blue Springs for 20 years, what I'm finding, more and more, people come home, they pull in their driveway, pull in their garage, shut the door, and you don't ever see them. You don't even know who your neighbor is. And we're finding that just by having these block parties open that up to the community, getting parents out, talking to each other, getting children out visiting with each other, it's helping breaking down barriers between people that, you know, didn't know other people. And our goal is to get back to the good old days when, I remember when I used to go out, my mother didn't have to worry about me because the whole community was watching out for me. And that's what we're trying to get back to, to encourage people to do that kind of stuff. We did make a Rotary Club presentation in June. Two of the members, myself and Kynett, were selected and awarded with the Mayor's Missouri League Civil Leadership Award this year, and we appreciate that. We did have a booth at the Fall Fun Fest, and the previous year, we had just went through the parade. We put a booth up. We found that we didn't, we didn't feel like it really served us, served our purpose. So this year, we're just going to do the parade, but we're still going to be involved. We also sponsored an HRC symposium with six neighboring HRCs just November, and that was held also, what's the name of the, I'm sorry?
The Church of Gethsemane.
Yeah. Okay. When we got together there, we, that was another time for us to meet with all of the different HRCs in the community in Kansas City area to once again talk and discuss where we were at and what we saw as our future. This is from the forum at the Blue Springs Christian Church that we just had in November. We had, we were, had a booth at National Night Out Against Crime, and there's Kynett right there, as a matter of fact, the chairman. And these are for Fall Fun Fest, where we had a booth, booth up. And this year, we got really excited because we found out that this past year, with, I guess, an influx of new commissioners, that everybody seems to be on the same page, we're all working towards the same goals, they're very excited to do things. So we have a very big list of things we'd like to get done this year. We want to continue to do the neighborhood block parties. We want to do one in April and August because we found that that was very beneficial. By the way, the second block party we had had more adults out there, and if we can get more families and adults out there, then that's when they start doing this mixing and mingling. We're going to be involved in the Fall Fun Fest Parade again, and we're going to also get a booth, a National Night Out Against Crime. And then we want to go back, the first year, we had an HRC fair, and we called it Helping Residents Connect Fair. And the purpose of that was to, one, get our name out there so people would know we were there, but also make people in the community aware of all the services that are available to them should they need them. We had people there from aging, we had people there from, I'm trying to remember all the different groups we had there, but we had about 20 different groups there, businesses and local groups, agencies for the seniors, agency for, I don't know, handicap, a little bit of everything there. And it was just to let people know what they have available to them here in this community. Let's see. We're going to work in conjunction with the First Christian Church in Blue Springs to co-sponsor their MLK Celebration in 2018. We also plan to collaborate with the Independence HRC to help with their annual Herities Festival. And we plan to purchase marketing materials to promote the HRC, and some of these will be used as giveaways to residents at various events. We, we hope to develop relationships with the school counselors and offer services of the HRC. We currently have the members on the HRC, I should go back to that real quick before I get done. Like I said, the HRC is comprised of seven members from the community who were appointed by the mayor. Kynett Campbell is the chair, Gino Duano, that's me, serves as the vice chair. Some of the other members appointed to the HRC Some of the other members appointed to the HRC, and tonight, we have Diane Alice Jones back here, Diane, I think most people know Diane. We also have Antoine Jennings back here as well, and Jane Bowerman, Susan Stokenberry, Lori Moon, and the Commissioner also, the Commission also has two student reps, Nafi Saifi and Mark Walker, and they're both, one of them are from each of the high schools, Blue Springs South and Blue Springs. They do not have voting power, however, the way we use them is, they have a different view on things and insight that they hear from the kids in school and the things they're learning about, you know, what's diversity, or people that they feel are being abused or taken advantage of. This is a forum for them to have some input and for us to get some insight from the students themselves. And we found by going in and having the student reps, that they're able to break those barriers and get the kids to talk to them about things that they wouldn't normally talk to adults about. So they are a vital part of the group, and they've been very helpful. We have just recently appointed them, and so now we're at a full, I think, a full load right now with everybody. Let's see. I got to get down here and figure out where I'm at now. Okay, it looks like I'm getting the questions and answers now. Is there any questions or anything from anybody about the committee?
Councilman Edmondson and then Councilman Levess.
Well, good to see that you bring the fair back on to your calendar. I attended that one, the first one you did over at Vesper Hall, and though I know it wasn't very well-attended, but I thought it was a great fair. I think a lot of people missed out on a great opportunity to see all these different people, different organizations that were there. So hopefully, with being it in October, get some advance notice out there and get the community to know that you're hosting it. I think it'll be a success compared to the first one, so good to see that you bring that back.
Thank you. We're learning, hopefully, we're learning.
We all keep learning, don't we?
Councilman Levess.
I was just going to ask if you could tell us what night of the week you meet, what the time is, so people know when they can come visit.
It's the third Tuesday of the month, and it's 6:30, and it's in this building at the other end, and the agenda is posted on the city website, and it's open to the general public, anybody can come. And if you want to speak, I think you have that opportunity, too, if you want to get on the website ahead of time, groups that want to come up and possibly talk about how they think they could, HRC may be helpful to them with their groups. I think one of the people at the fair, as a matter of fact, we had the bus out, you know, at the fair, too, the kids' fair. So a lot of good things are happening out there. We're excited. It's going to be a busy, busy, busy year for us with only meeting once a month. We've even talked a little bit about maybe possibly meeting more often, I don't know. But right now, all that stuff, I think, just depends on how much we want to get done. We want to make a difference, we want people to know the HRC exists and that it's there to help the community.
Anyone else? Certainly, we thank you for what you do. I know Chief McCoy and I spent a lot of time as we start to explore the possibility of having a Human Relations Commission, and certainly, a city of our size needed one desperately. And we found that out with our various meetings we had with the Department of Justice and Dr. Gomsey from Lee Summit. So anyway, thank you, thank you, other Commissioners, for being here tonight for the presentation, and we'll tell Kinet that you all did good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have an introduction and ring the bell, 4469. One of them would like to introduce it.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4469, an ordinance approving final plat for Woods Chapel Corner.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second. Discussion.
Can I, real quick? It's nice to see that with all the money we spent in Woods Chapel developing that, that now we're actually getting some property that quote-quote could be considered blight on the north side there, actually somebody coming in and trying to develop that. So it's actually good to see that some of what we've done, planted those seeds, is already developing.
Well, in add to that, I think it was in my newsletter that the city's going to be recognized with an award coming up here pretty soon as a result of that effort. And every time I think about it, I think about Oliver. Any other discussion? All in favor, I? All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4469, an ordinance approving final plat for Woods Chapel Corner.
Move the bill be approved in a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Proceed to discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Levess.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Kerry T. Anosley, and given ordinance number 4641.
That brings us to Merrill Announcement. I'm so excited. Why am I excited? A week from Thursday is the mayor's ninth State of the City Address, and if you haven't figured it out, the theme this year is "Excited."
I hear it's epic.
Thank you, Councilman. It's going to be at Adams Park Conference Center, and I believe we start at 11:30, is that correct?
Noon is when the program will start. Networking will start at 11:30.
But they're going to probably open the food line?
11:45.
11:45, okay. So if you have an opportunity, sign up, be there. You'll enjoy it. That brings me to Faut Stepana. February is Black History Month, recognized as the Black History Month, and during the month of February, I have quotes from people that signed, most of them you'll probably recognize their names. Tonight comes from Harriet Tubman, and I quote, "Every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember, you have within you the strength, the patience, and the passion to reach for the stars to change the world," end quote. Don't have any visitors' appearance forms? Therefore, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? No second?
Second.
We can stay here a little longer if you want. All in favor, I?
Aye.
All the same sign? We adjourn.
Brace yourself.